Okay, thank you. Welcome to the Summer Book Club on The Great Path of Awakening. Thanks for joining from all over the world and I appreciate you all being here as part of our class today. I have, as, I have, as the, excuse me, I have one technical problem developed, I apologize. Yeah, working with new technology is a bit of a problem. Okay, in any case, in any case, using The Great Path of Awakening as our guide, we're going to be working through a class that will teach us about transforming emotions. And so that is, that's the reason that we put this class together was because it's been very difficult times for us the last few months. A lot of us have gone through quite a bit, some people have dealt with illness of themselves or with others, and some people have dealt with the loss of loved ones, some people have had financial instability and experienced homelessness. There have been so many different things happening. And then on top of that, all of the political upheaval in the country and all of the calls for justice of various types. And my hope is that by learning about working with our minds, that we'll be able to be present for ourselves, to be present for others, and to be able to work for justice in our own lives and in the lives of others in the most powerful and constructive way. So that's, it's a, it's a, it's a big thing for a book club to want to bring about goodness for all beings. But I'd like to invite you to join in heart and mind with me and dedicate this class to all of those who are suffering and all of those who need to be freed and liberated. So we'll spend a moment thinking about them. Okay. Today, I'd like to begin with the, with a little story about how this teaching came to us. The, the teaching that is in the book, The Great Path of Awakening. This book was published in English language for the first time in the 1980s by the Canadian translator Ken MacLeod. And it's, it was a phenomenal discovery for me as a, as a young Buddhist, trying to understand myself, trying to understand the Dharma. And to read that we could work with anything that arose in our minds, it was quite a powerful thing. So, so being able to, to practice and learn how to meditate on compassion was an important thing for me at that time, and I think it's important for all of us. All of us want to be better people. And, and that includes the, the author of this book. The author of The Great Path of Awakening is Jamgon Kontrul the Great, who lived in the 19th century. He was asked to, to take a 12th century Buddhist text that had been written by the great Tibetan saint Chikawa Yeshe Dorje. He was asked to take this 12th century text called Mind Training in Seven Points and comment on it. And so he set about reading, studying, and writing about this 12th century text. But the 12th century text itself had a history. It came from an earlier text, which was called the Mind Training in Eight Stanzas, which those of you who are, who are followers of His Holiness the Dalai Lama will recognize because His Holiness the Dalai Lama frequently teaches from the Eight Stanzas of Thought Transformation, which was written in the 12th century by Longri Thangpa, another Tibetan saint. But even that book was based on earlier teachings that were taught in the 11th century by the great, by the great Indian master Atisha, who himself had gotten these teachings on how to transform mental afflictions. He had gotten these teachings from the great master Serlingpa in Indonesia. And so we look at the story of how this teaching came to us. The Buddha gave these teachings in India 2,500 years ago. And from that time, 2,500 years ago, the teachings went through several iterations. Shanti Deva spoke of them in the 8th century in his book, The Guide to the Bodhisattva's Way of Life. And then in the, in the, in the 10th century, the saint Atisha got in a boat because a vision of Tara spoke to him and said, "Go to Sumatra and learn" the teachings on compassion and transformation. So he went to Sumatra and he studied with the great master Serlingpa for 12 years. And then after 12 years, Atisha got back on the boat and sailed back to India, where he was promptly invited by the king of Western Tibet to go to Tibet. And he spent the last 12 or 17 years of his life in Tibet teaching. He taught, the main thing he taught was ethical behavior and the practice of taking refuge in the Buddha, the Dharma, and the Sangha. And he also taught this, this teaching from Serlingpa, the, the teaching on how to transform mental afflictions into the path of awakening. And so after Atisha's death, the, these teachings were passed from teacher to disciple, to teacher to disciple for, for some time. And then finally, Longri Thangpa wrote some of them down. And, and then the book started to appear. And then Longri Thangpa's book was discovered by Chikawa Yeshe Dorje in the 12th century. And then he studied the book and he accomplished the book. And through his accomplishment of this book, he was able to, to bring about the, his own awakening. And then he wrote about the, the book so that it would be then, he wrote about the teachings so that it would be available in book form to other people. So, so here we are, 2,500 years after the Buddha gave these original teachings and we're receiving them through a lineage of masters that start with the Buddha and then go through Shanti Deva, go through Atisha, go through, goes through the, the disciples of Atisha to Longri Thangpa to, to Chikawa Yeshe Dorje. And then finally, to the 19th century, when Jamgon Kontrul the Great wrote the book, The Great Path of Awakening. Now, the seven-point mind training, you may recognize in that it is there, it consists of 59 mind training slogans. And these 59 mind training slogans help us to learn the path of how to transform mental afflictions into the path of awakening. And when you read the, the introduction, the translator's introduction to this book, Ken MacLeod talks about the, the atmosphere in Tibet in the 11th century after the death of King Long Dharma and how a new wave of Buddhist teachers was coming to Tibet, giving them the teachings on awakening. And, and there's something in the translator's introduction I'd like to call your attention to. And that is, it's on page, Roman numeral 16, where he says that, the bottom paragraph on this page, he said, "The, the, the subject of the seven points of mind training is, is a system that will help people to come to awakening." He says, "It is difficult for most of us to employ true intelligence and compassion in all circumstances. Our own interests, our own concerns for ourselves constantly cloud and condition our perceptions and responses to events around us. When our clinging to self is strong, we do not surrender it easily, easily or willingly, and our attempts to use compassion and intelligence are clumsy and cause us regret or guilt. However, if we understand that ego is a sham, that the self we cling to is in fact nothing, and we become familiar with the habit of letting go of our own interests in a situation, we become more capable of surrendering ego, just as we were able, we are able to throw away without regret an old sweater that never fit us anyway. This understanding and familiarization are developed in sitting meditation that employ the techniques taught in this book." And, yes, and then sitting meditation is essential for it is the only method by which this approach to the world can be developed. So I thought I would give you the example of the sweater right away at the beginning. Because when, when the Buddha said that, in his teaching on the Four Noble Truths, when he said that suffering was part of our life and that that's the first noble truth, and then the second noble truth, he said that suffering was caused by clinging and fixation, particularly clinging to self. I'm sure that these two teachings, that, that suffering is a fact of life and that suffering is, has a cause and that cause is clinging and particularly clinging to self, a lot of people would become a little discouraged, saying, "Wait a minute, how could I ever, how could I ever do away with clinging? How could I ever do away with my clinging to self? That would be impossible." And, and what this book does is it gives us methodology for first, learning about the self and learning how we cause a lot of our own suffering inadvertently and accidentally as we attempt to get happiness for ourselves and how we can actually change that trajectory. We can change that story, we can change that path for ourselves into a path in which we care more not just about ourselves, but about others and try to bring their, their interests to the front. And if we can do this, if we can bring the interests of other people to the front of our consciousness and the front of our thinking, we can gradually transcend some of our own selfish clinging and then be able to help other people. So this is the, the goal of The Great Path of Awakening is to show us how to take this path that uses the very things that we are concerned about. It uses our own anger, it uses our own sadness, it uses our own worry and our own fear as a methodology to practice toward the path of awakening. And so it's my hope that we're able, that by going through this book together, that we'll learn something about this path to awakening. Now, I want to make sure that, that I ground this in a basic practice. And so I'm guessing that most of you are already conversant or familiar with the quiet sitting meditation practice. Because if you remember, the, the other two of the Four Noble Truths, they have to do with the, the solution to suffering. That's the third noble truth, that because suffering has a cause, it has a solution. And the fourth noble truth is that there is a path. And the path that leads to the end of suffering helps us by teaching us how to let go of the causes of suffering. And so many of you will already be familiar with the practice of quiet sitting meditation. In quiet sitting meditation, we sit quietly and rest our minds on the breath or on a visual object. And by resting our mind on, on the breath or on a visual object, we train our attention. And by training our attention, we, we learn how to come back again and again and again. And by learning how to come back again and again and again, we learn how to let go again and again of the thoughts that had distracted us. And so I think a lot of folks are already familiar with the, the quiet sitting practice, but I'm going to re-familiarize everyone with it tonight. So, so I guess that's a little bit about, about what we're going to be doing. And I'm going to take a few moments here to pause and see if anybody has questions. You can either put your questions in the chat and they can be housekeeping questions about the class. It can be any kind of question. And then if I don't see any questions in chat, then I will ask for questions via audio. And so if you have any, any questions about the class so far and where we are heading, you can just tippy type them or ask. Any questions? I'm looking for hand raises. I'm learning how to use this, this platform. Okay, nothing in chat? Okay, well, here we go. All right. All right, all right, sorry. Okay, I just wanted to be sure that there weren't any questions so far. Does anybody have anything in particular? Oh, here we go. Do we read before the class? How will that go? Yeah, I gotta apologize in that I've never led a book club and I probably should have studied some YouTube videos or something. So, yes, there is a syllabus. And, and Chris, if you could share that link again to the syllabus today. Thank you, Chris. We're going to be sharing, we're going to be covering pages 1 through 10 today. And you don't have to have read them ahead, it's okay. If you have not, because several people contacted me this week to let me know they did not have a copy of the book, and it's okay. Even if you, if you absolutely cannot get your hands on a copy of the book, email me and I'll help you out with, because somebody gave me a PDF of the, of the 1985 version. So I can help you out with that. And then the question is, "It's based on eight verses for training the mind. Which verse might not have made the cut?" Ha, 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 ha. Okay, yeah, everybody says that. They say, "Well, if this is based on the Eight Stanzas of Thought Transformation, which one did they leave out?" And the answer is no, none of them got left out. They were just folded together and reformulated and written down in a different order. So, but thank you for asking about that. Yeah, because Mind Training in Seven Points is, it's a way of organizing the 59 slogans. Any other questions that people have? Okay. Okay. All right. So. Okay, so then we'll go ahead and I'd like to draw people's attention to the, the, the beginning of the book. He, after the translator's introduction on page, on page one, Jamgon Kontrul the Great begins with a, basically, he begins with an aspiration. Does it matter which version of the book is used? No, it's, it's, either one is okay. It's a little easier if you have the 2005 version because the page numbers will be the same. But I'm hoping that you can, you can follow. I'll try to keep the 1985 version open so that I can, I can guide you in case. Yeah, it's, it's, it's page one on, in both editions. Jamgon Kontrul begins his text by, by making an aspiration, praying to the Buddha and, and so forth, and asking for his blessing to accomplish this book. And to, and then he also prays to the Bodhisattva's Menjushri Avalokiteshvara and others, he says, "Who set out in the ship of courageous compassion and now liberate beings from the ocean of suffering." And then he talks about the spiritual friend who is unsurpassable. That's the teacher or the guide, reveals the noble path of compassion and emptiness. That he is the guide of all victorious ones. "I prostrate myself at my guru's feet." Then he says, "I shall explain here the one path on which the victorious one and his children have traveled. Easy to understand, it is not corrupted. Easy to practice, it is entered with enthusiasm. Yet it is profound, so Buddhahood is attained." Those last three lines really, they kind of touch my heart. "Easy to understand, it is not corrupted." What he's, what he's trying to get at here is that when we over-intellectualize any topic, we push it away from our heart and push it into the, onto the shelf of conceptual knowledge. If it, but whereas if something is easy to understand, we can take it to heart easily. And that's what he means, it is not corrupted by over-intellectualization. "Easy to practice, it's entered into with enthusiasm. And yet it is profound, so Buddhahood is attained." And so he's, then he sets out. Jamgon Kontrul says he's going to talk about this 12th century text. He says, "I'll discuss it in three topics. The source of the transmission, the need for the training, and then the actual instructions." And the source of, the source of the transmission, he covers a lot of the material that we already covered in the first part of our discussion tonight about how this text came to us from 2,500 years ago, from the teachings of the Buddha, through the teachings of Atisha, Serlingpa, Atisha, Chikawa Yeshe Dorje, and others. But to me, the, the more interesting part is on page five, where he talks about the need for mind training, which for those of you with the 85 is also on page five. He says, he starts, kind of, he starts in the middle by saying, "Don't even consider the ephemeral happiness that results from birth in the higher realms of gods and men." So basically, what he's trying to say is, "We know that you want a better life and that the Buddha taught that if you practice good karma and stay away from bad karma, you will have higher rebirth." He's saying, "Don't just settle for that, go farther, go beyond." So then he says, "Although the enlightenment of Shravakas and Prajakabuddhas, those are arhats, which are beings who have studied and practiced the Dharma so deeply that they have cut through self-clinging, but they haven't quite arrived at full enlightenment yet." So he says, "Although that can be realized, it's not a final nirvana or a transcendence of misery because they're still clinging to their state of peace." And so he says, "Consequently, we should only strive for the state of completely perfected Buddhahood. There are no methods to effect this attainment other than those which rely on two forms of meditation. Relative bodhicitta, which is training the mind in love and compassion, and ultimate bodhicitta, which is resting evenly in a non-discursive state, free from conceptual elaborations." Well, that's a mouthful, so let's stop for a second. So what he is saying here, here is that if we want to become fully perfected Buddhas, we have to practice only one thing. And I know that is kind of shocking because most people who study about Buddhism, they say, "Well, Buddhism is so big, how could I possibly study it all? It's just too much, there's too much going on in Buddhism. So how could I possibly practice it all?" Well, what, what's great about Jamgon Kontrul's presentation is that he briefs it down for us. He makes it easy for us. He says, he says, "There's really..." Oh, I'm sorry, somebody is asking me a question. My goodness, I have all kinds of things. See if this helps you, okay? So, the, the, there are only two subjects you have to study to become a Buddha, and that is bodhicitta, relative bodhicitta, and ultimate bodhicitta. And that's amazing. So we don't have to study like a thousand things, we can just study two things. This makes life much easier for a person who wants to become a Buddha. If they think they have to study a lot of stuff, it's too much. But if they only have to study two things, that makes it easier. So I think this is the genius of this particular teaching is that the only thing you have to do is study love and compassion and wisdom. Now, wisdom is a big topic. And in fact, he even says later in this chapter, he says, "True ultimate bodhicitta is not something that we as beginners are going to have a realization of, but the love and compassion practice, the relative bodhicitta, is something we can practice." Now, you might ask, "What is it about bodhicitta that brings us to awakening?" Well, the, the practice of, the word bodhi means awakening and the word chitta means mind, the mind of awakening. Oops, okay, there we go, I'm sorry, I had to... I'm, I'm, I'm super sorry to that person who was waiting in the waiting room for a while. I'm very sorry that you had to wait so long. Next, next week, I'll have an assistant doing the waiting room for me. So, so I'm sorry that you had to wait. We're talking about bodhicitta. Bodhi is, is awakening and chitta is mind. And so how do we have a mind of awakening? Now, if you remember from the start of the talk tonight, we talked about the Four Noble Truths. The, the truth of, of suffering and the truth of the cause of suffering, which is clinging and fixation. And then the third noble truth, which is the, the gaining freedom, gaining freedom from suffering, which is freedom from the causes of suffering, which means to learn how to let go. And then lastly, the path that leads to the end of suffering, which is the path that teaches us how to let go. And so how do we let go of things we're attached to? How do we let go of what the Buddha called the poisons of ignorance and attachment and aversion? How do we let go of all of those things? And this is what bodhicitta does. In other words, the, the reason that this practice is easier than others is because it uses a natural human response. It uses love as the path. Everybody loves love. And if we can train ourselves to love ourselves and others more than we do right now, if we can train ourselves to think about others and ourself more than we do right now, if we can train ourself in love, then we'll be able to overturn ego fixation and bring about a state of awakened mind. And so that's, that's the power of bodhicitta. Those of you who have seen the, the videos that we made about the verses of Shanti Deva will remember that in Shanti Deva's book, he's, the, The Guide to the Bodhisattva's Way of Life, he says that, "Just as a flash of lightning rends the night and shows in its glare all that the dark black clouds had hid, so likewise, through the Buddhist power, rarely thoughts of goodness arise in the world." And, and then in the next verse, he says, "Thus behold, the utter frailty of goodness. Except for perfect bodhicitta, there is none, that, nothing that can withstand the great and overwhelming force of evil." And so, and so what Shanti Deva is saying is that, that love is what helps us to counteract evil. And, and this is, this is very helpful for us to know because during difficult times that we're in right now, it seems like that love is taking, is, is running away and that powerful angry people seem to be everywhere. And it might get to seeming a little bit scary and a little bit like it's without hope. But what Shanti Deva is saying is that there is always hope. Where there is life, there is hope. Because wherever there are human beings, there's the potential for awakening. And love will help us accomplish that awakening. And so if we can work on training our minds in love and compassion, we'll be able to overturn evil in ourselves. And that will help us to live bravely and courageously in a difficult world. So, so that's what, what he was meaning when, in this text, when he says that, and when he says that the only two things you need to practice to reach Buddhahood are relative bodhicitta, which is training the mind in love and compassion, and ultimate bodhicitta, which is resting evenly in a non-discursive state, free from conceptual elaborations. Wow, that last one was a mouthful. Non, non-discursive state, that's shamatha, that's quiet sitting meditation, where you're, where you practice being undistracted. Resting evenly in a non-chatty, non-discursive state, free from conceptual elaborations, meaning that you're free from fixating on anything. Your, your mind is free and relaxed. And that's a little bit harder to do. Then he quotes Nagarjuna, who backs up his, his teaching, that really the only thing you need to study is bodhicitta. And then on the next, in the next paragraph, he says, "Moreover, whatever accumulations of merit and wisdom we may have, the root of spiritual development in the Mahayana, the Six Perfections, not abiding nirvana..." All those things with big names, all those things that are big words. He says, "All of these Buddhist topics, he said, only amount to the arising of bodhicitta. It arises on the basis of love and compassion." And then he gives us, he tells us what we're going to be doing after we become Buddhas. He says, "Even after full Buddhahood is attained, there is nothing to do except to work for the welfare of others with non-referential compassion." So even after we attain enlightenment... So even after we attain enlightenment. We're not going to be doing anything other than. Working, uh, toward the benefit of others with non-referential love and compassion, so that's going to be our job as, uh, enlightened Bodhisattvas in the future. Then he goes on to say that true ultimate Bodhicitta will not arise in the course of experience of beginners, but relative Bodhicitta will definitely arise if they train in it. Which is great, because trying to understand wisdom, that's so hard, but trying to understand love, that's easier. Then with the development of relative Bodhicitta, ultimate Bodhicitta will be realized naturally. In other words, when we learn to love and practice love. Then wisdom will arise in our minds and our hearts naturally. So he says, for these and many similar reasons. We must meditate energetically on relative Bodhicitta at the beginning, if we are to achieve any meaningful results with respect to the topic of Bodhicitta. And then he says, for someone who wishes instruction on the subject. The basic method for training is, and then he quotes Shanti Deva, who says. He who desires shelter quickly for himself and for all others. Should use sacred mystery of exchanging oneself for others. Consequently, he says. Only the method of meditating on exchanging oneself for others is explained in what follows. All other methods of mind training are simply elaborations of this theme. So, that's, um, that's what we're going to be talking about. This week, we're going to talk about. Basic quiet sitting meditation, which is a basis for learning compassion meditation. And we're going to talk about. How we might use this practice that's in this book. How we might use this practice as a, a daily practice. When, uh, when I first read this book, it just seemed like the fifty-nine mind training slogans were a bit of a mystery. And I, I didn't see how they, how they hung together. How did they make sense? What was it all about? But the more I studied this book, and I began to study it with other people, I began to, uh, teach this book to other people. And after about ten or fifteen years of teaching this book to other people. The, the patterns and the, the sense of it began to arise for me, I began to see the pattern of the book. And, uh, it's actually a, a complete path to Buddhahood in this book. And I checked this out with Kempo Carthar Rinpoche, my teacher. I said, Rinpoche, you know, this looks like it's pretty complete, and he says, oh yeah, he says, this is definite path to Buddhahood. He says, you, even if you only do this, if you only do this book. Yeah, you can, you can achieve Buddhahood just by doing the practices that are in this book, so I'm taking that, uh, that, that. Uh, as a, um, as confidence, that by studying these practices, we can make progress on our Dharma path. So, uh, how do we do that? Uh, well, the way we do it is, uh, by, uh, uh, by practicing, uh, Lojong as though it were a daily practice. Let me see if I can. See if I can make, I'm going to try one more time to see if I can get, uh, the screen sharing on this to work. It might. Or it might not. Let's see here. Oh, hey, guess what I did, I accidentally shut down Zoom, can you still see me? All right, well, that was a, that was a big mistake. So I have to not touch my screen ever again, for the entirety of this meeting. So, um, anyway, oh, wait a minute, there is a cancel, okay, good, cancel. There we go, all right, shoo, I thought the class would be over prematurely. So, um. So what we're doing then is, uh, what, I'm going to try my screen sharing one more time to see if I get lucky. Mm-hmm. Now, it doesn't look like it's going to happen. I tried to, um, I tried to load, uh, in advance, load all of the, uh, the things that I needed so that I could quickly find them. And it's just not going to happen, oh, what a shame. Okay. Well, uh, safe to say that, uh, in the handouts for this evening. There's a handout called, uh, daily Lojong practice. There's a handout called daily Lojong practice. And, uh, if, uh, if, if anybody has the, uh, the, um. Download address for that, you can put it in chat and people can download it from the chat. And thank you. And, um, let's see if I can make it appear. Yeah, I can make it appear, I'm going to try one more time on screen sharing and see if I get lucky. And then everybody can see it. Yeah, okay. Yeah, there it is, yay, that's one in a row. So, uh, if we want to do, um, Lojong, uh, Lojong means, uh, mind training. Lo, the word lo in Tibetan means. Mind, and jang means training. So training the mind in love and training the mind in compassion. And it starts with. Uh, refuge in Bodhicitta. You would actually sit down in, in your meditation room, and you would do a Lojong daily practice. And how you would do it would be to sit down on your meditation seat, whether you're in a chair or on a cushion. And you would recite, uh, a taking of refuge. Until I reach enlightenment, I take refuge in the Buddhas and the Dharma and the Sangha. By the merit of accomplishing the six perfections, may I achieve Buddhahood for the benefit of all sentient beings. Now, the six perfections are, uh, perfect love, and actually, it starts with generosity. Perfect generosity, perfect ethics, perfect patience, perfect diligence. Perfect, um, meditation and perfect wisdom. But we'll be talking about those a little farther down the line. So what you're saying is, through the merit of practicing these, uh, perfect virtues, may I achieve Buddhahood for the benefit of all sentient beings. And if those words don't really hold any meaning for you, then you can just say the first three. Until I reach enlightenment, I take refuge in all the Buddhas and in the Dharma and the Sangha. And you could recite that as a way of establishing that your practice is leading to Buddhahood. That, that this is your, um, your aspiration. And then it says, at the beginning of every period of meditation. Imagine your root guru sitting on a lotus and moon seat above your head. Now, you can visualize your guru as being the Buddha Shakyamuni, made of brilliant golden light. Because the, the Buddha Shakyamuni, the historical Buddha, is a Buddha that most of us can visualize, uh, pretty easily. And if you can't visualize a Buddha, you can just think that the Buddha is present. Now, the reason we start with the Buddha is because the Buddha is who gave us this teaching in the first place. And so it says, his body is, uh, radiant and his face is happy and smiling, as he regards all beings with non-referential compassion. In him, all of the root and lineage gurus are present, so this means that all of the Buddhist teachers of all times are there in that one form over your head. With intense respect and devotion, repeat the following prayers, seven, twenty-one, or more times. Well, most of us are really busy, so, uh, three times or one time, that would work. And you say, I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and Bodhicitta to arise in my mind. And so, uh, making this aspiration. You think that you would very much like for the Buddha, who is sitting above your head, to give you this blessing. Then, after you've asked for the blessing of the Buddha, imagine that your teacher, uh, descends through the aperture of Brahma. Basically, it's the, it's a spot about eight finger widths back from your hairline. It, there's like a little bump and, uh, uh, on the back of your head there, the top back of your head. Just imagine that the guru falls down through there and comes into your heart. And rests there in a pavilion of light, which is described as being like an open shell. And this, uh, exercise in intense respect and devotion is known as Guru Yoga. It is important to begin at every period of meditation in this way. And then you can do your shamatha practice, or your tonglen practice, or both, as usual. And at the end, then you would dedicate the merit of your daily Lojong practice with the seven branch prayer. And, uh, the seven branch prayer, we're going to be talking about, uh, several, uh, meetings from now, because, um. It's basically, uh, uh, a, a traditional, very old, it goes back centuries, uh, technique for, uh, praying and making offerings to the Buddhas. You can see, it says, with complete faith, I bow to all the victorious ones and their sons and daughters. Who abide in the ten directions and three times. I offer flowers, incense, light, perfume, food, music, and many other things, both in substance and with my imagination. I ask the noble assemblage to accept them. I confess all the evil actions I have done, influenced by defilements, from time without beginning until now. The five that ripen immediately, the ten non-virtuous acts, and many others. I rejoice in the merit of whatever virtue Shravakas, Prajakabuddhas, Bodhisattvas, and ordinary people gather throughout the three times. I pray for the wheel of Dharma to be turned. Of the, uh, teachings of Mahayana and Hinayana in ways suitable for the different aptitudes and motivations present in sentient beings. I ask the Buddhas not to pass into nirvana, but with great compassion. And until some sorrow is completely empty, to look, uh, after all sentient beings who drown in this ocean of sorrow. May whatever merit I have accumulated become a seed for the enlightenment of all beings. Without delay, may I become a splendid leader for all beings. Now, you might think about, uh, uh, that, that is a little bit of a strange thing to wish for. You might think, well, uh, why would I want to become a, uh. Um, a, a leader of, uh, of all sentient beings? Well, there's a lot of suffering going on in the world, and there, and each of us has the potential to benefit other beings. I know this, these days, people are talking about, uh, how sentient beings have the capacity to give each other illnesses. But they also have the capacity to help each other. And, uh, to give each other goodness, and we can have a positive impact on people, even from a distance. And so if we work on our motivation and we work on our, um. Our love and compassion for ourselves and our love and compassion for other people. Then gradually, over time, we can change our hearts and minds. So, uh, this, uh, daily practice is, uh, is one I'd like to, uh, recommend that you try as an experiment. Uh, and then, uh, next week, when we get together, uh, you can answer. Um, uh, you can, eh, eh, you can kind of tell me how it's going, uh, is, uh, as a, as a daily practice for you. Uh, this practice, if you do it, uh, all the way through, it might take five minutes, it might take seven minutes. It could take as many as ten minutes, but that's it, you don't have to do it for a big, long, huge time. Five minutes or seven minutes, this would be the easiest homework assignment you've probably ever had, five minutes of meditation. And, uh, and if, eh, if this is something that you can, uh, do, it's, it's something, uh, I'd like for you to try. Now, here's the reason I want to do this. It's, um, remember I told you at the beginning that I kind of was feeling bad, because I called it a book club, and it's not kind of really a traditional book club? It's actually like a change your mind club, you know, we're kind of like, we're kind of like thinking about, like, how do I want to change my heart? How do I want to change my mind? Well, this is, this is my secret agenda, I would love it if you could practice five minutes a day. Okay, so I, so I, I brought you here for a book club, and now I'm going to ask you to practice five minutes a day, so. If you can, it would be really cool. Uh, there's a couple of people on the call here, I see, uh, Evelyn is here and Kathy Lamo is here. Uh, and, uh, they, they are familiar with this, because, uh, when they were studying with me at the pastoral care training program. Uh, at our home monastery at Karma Triana Dharma Chakra in Woodstock, New York. Uh, I had them do this practice every day for six months, you guys survived, didn't you? Yeah, 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 they, they, they came through it okay, and, uh. And basically, uh, what I told them to do is, I told them to think about their lives. And to think about what, if there was like one thing. That they could change about themselves, what that one thing would be. And the usual, and I told them to think about it in terms of. What is the one habit that we have? That I said, what is the one habit that you have? That stands in the way of you helping other people? What is, you know, everybody has at least one bad habit that stands in the way of, of them. Helping and benefiting other beings. And, uh, and you don't have to tell me what it is, but I'd like for you to make a mental note about that this week. Think about what that one thing is for you, that really stands in the way of you being able to help people. For me, I don't know if it's my anger, or if it's my impatience, I tend to be, eh, I tend to be very judgmental and very impatient. And, uh, and I, I'm still struggling with that. So I've, I've, I've had that on my list for a long time, eh, and I'm hoping that, eh, as I continue to practice Dharma, it will slowly get better. But what I decided to do was, I decided to, when I did my, the daily Lojong practice. When I said that verse. When I asked the, uh, I said to the, to the, to the Buddha, I said. Uh, I pray for your blessing, my, my teacher, my completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and Bodhicitta to arise in my mind, and help me with my anger, please. So, um, this is something that you can try and, and, and do, and by trying and doing this. Uh, you can, you don't have to say the words, but you can hold it in your heart. And say, please help me with this, uh, that I'm trying to change in myself. Uh, because, um. As the Buddha said, we are what we think. All that we are arises with our thoughts, and with our thoughts, we make the world. So if we can slowly be, begin to accept that there are things about ourselves that need to change. Before we can actually reach out and help others. Then we can begin to, uh, to form some compassion for ourselves. And when we form compassion for ourselves, then slowly we can form compassion for other people. So anyway, um, I'm sorry that was a bit lengthy, but, um, I think you get the idea. Uh, that this is something I'd like for you to try, I'd like for you to try. Um, thinking about the one thing you want to work on. And then I'd like for you to, uh, try to do a little bit of a daily practice of Lojong every day. Now, the reason, uh, I brought this up is because, eh, if you are looking, uh, at the book. Uh, on page seven. There is, uh, an explanation of the seven points of mind training. And for those of you with the nineteen eighty-five edition. Yeah, I'll try my best to give you the, um, the actual page numbers, this is, um, on page seven for both, uh, two thousand five. And eighty-five. He says that the seven points are these. The groundwork, the instruction on what supports Dharma. Number two, the actual practice, training in Bodhicitta. Number three, the transformation of adversity into the path of awakening. Number four, the utilization of the practice in one's whole life. Number five, the extent of proficiency in mind training. Number six, the commitments of mind training. And number seven. The guidelines for mind training. So each of these leads to the other, the groundwork or the foundation. Uh, then leads to the actual practice. And then the actual practice is training our mind in love and compassion and in wisdom. And then the, the next one, the third one, is the transformation of adversity into the path of awakening, which is very important. Because, uh, we seem to have no shortage of adversity. And if we can use adversity and change and transform adversity into, uh, a Dharma path, that would be an incredible boon to all of us. And, uh, number four, uh, is, it shows us how to expand the practice to fill our whole life. By teaching us five, uh, five factors, that if we apply these five factors in our life, in our practice, our practice will expand. Number six, uh, the precepts of mind training or commitments of mind training. How do How do mind training practitioners behave, in other words? And the seventh are the guidelines. And the guidelines for mind training, I like to call those the rules of the road, the things to do, the things that you do in order to preserve your mind training and prevent it from weakening. So those are the seven points. And believe it or not, we just covered like the first one, the groundwork. Because if you look at page eight, he says, "The groundwork, instructions for what supports Dharma." As to the first point, the first of the 59 slogans is this. First, do the groundwork. And then there's the groundwork for a period of meditation. And then there's general groundwork instructions. The groundwork for a period of meditation is exactly what we just covered. The imagining of your guru above your head, the praying to your guru, and the descent of the guru into your heart. And then your practice follows that. And the groundwork instructions are telling us that we are general instructions. So I think that I wanted to try to do it in as painless a way as possible. So I covered point one for you before we even opened the book. I figured it was easier. And then the groundwork instructions, which are on page nine of the 2005 edition. And they start on page eight of the 85, 1985 edition. And I may be calling it 85, it might be 87. Yeah, it is. It's 87, sorry. Are what are called the four thoughts that turn the mind towards spiritual life. Those of you who are familiar with Buddhist teachings know that that for us to recognize the four noble truths, suffering, its cause, the solution, and the path. For us to study these four noble truths, we have to be able to reflect a little bit on our own lives. And so if we reflect on our lives, there are four thoughts that will help us to feel like we can practice Dharma, we can practice spiritual life. And the first one is the preciousness of our life. And so we are asked to reflect on how fortunate we are to be who we are right now because we could have been anywhere, in any time, in any way, but here we are. And even though we have had struggles in our life, we're still here and we're still capable of practicing meditation. And so that's the first of the thoughts that help us to turn our mind towards spiritual life. We should feel gratitude for that and develop a feeling of gratitude. And then, and then the second of these four thoughts is the impermanence, recognizing that life is short and we need to practice now. We put our mind toward the practice of the Dharma. Third, because of the Buddhist teaching on action, cause, and result are true because it's true that we create our experience of the world through our minds and we create our experience of our minds through our words and actions, that our words and actions actually help us to create our experience of the world. And karma is nothing more than conditioning our mind with thoughts, feelings, and emotions and all of the actions that we do. Recognizing that karma is real, we try our best to not do negative action and to pursue virtuous action instead. And then lastly, that this world of suffering that the Buddha called samsara, this cyclic existence that the Buddha called samsara, is basically unsatisfactory. And a Buddhist teacher told me not too long ago that one of his favorite ways of talking about samsara, this wheel of cyclic existence, he said, "His favorite way of talking about it is this feeling that things just aren't quite right." He said, "It's kind of like discomfort and dissatisfaction." The word frequently used for it in early Buddhist teachings is dukkha. D-U-K-K-A. And dukkha is basically this feeling that something is just not quite right. That like, maybe I need this, or maybe I need that, or maybe if I do this, or maybe if I do that, I'll be more comfortable here. And so on. And in one of Mingya Rinpoche's books, he says, you know, he says, "You sit in a chair for a while," and he says, "And then after a while, you kind of like have to move." Because he said, "There's just something not quite 100% comfortable about the way you're sitting, and so you have to kind of like move around." He said, "That's dukkha." The fact that it's that things are never really satisfying and that you have to keep changing things and adjusting things in order to be comfortable in samsara. And so these are the groundwork. And basically what Jang and Contraal is saying in his commentary here is he's saying that if you think about these things and practice these, then it will help you to be motivated to practicing meditation. And so if we can do the guru yoga and we can do this reflection on the groundwork, this will help us. So let's see, I think we have some time now for questions. And let's see what we have for here. There are some questions. Where in the Lojong practice would a renewal of Bodhisattva vows fit? You know what I would do? I would do it right after you take refuge. I would do it right after refuge and before the guru yoga. But then have the Buddha descend into your heart and then imagine that you're and then do your practice of Lojong after that. So I would do the Bodhisattva vow first is what I would do if you're going to add it to the practice. Then, "Do we have to complete all of nundro to do the rest of the seven points?" Good question. Those are smart people who are thinking about the karma-kadhu lineage teachings that are all about the practice of Mahamudra meditation. So those of you who are doing Mahamudra-nundro practice, you don't have to worry about that. Every single practice has its own nundro. So the good thing about the nundro for Lojong is that you don't have to repeat it 100,000 times. You just have to do this short practice every day. So you don't have to do 100,000 of anything to do the groundwork or the nundro for Lojong practice. You just have to do this short practice where you imagine the Buddha on top of your head. You supplicate the Buddha, asking for their blessing. Imagine that the Buddha descends into your heart. And then you can do your shamatha practice, then you can do your tonglen practice and whatnot. And we're going to be teaching you meditation in the next session. This was just about introduction and an idea of what bodhicita is and why we're learning it. But next time, we'll be getting more into, we'll get into the main practice of bodhicita in the next session. And we'll be learning tonglen meditation. And then the person is asking, "What does guru mean?" Let's see here. Do I, yeah, okay. Do we have to complete all of nundro to do the rest of the seven points? Nope, we're covered that. What is a guru? Okay, the word guru means teacher. And so we need to have a teacher to help us understand suffering, its causes, the solution, and the path. We can hear the Buddhist teaching, but if we don't have a teacher, we can get lost as we're trying to figure out how to practice meditation. If we try to learn things from a book, that's okay, but the book can't tell us if we're making mistakes. So having a person who can be your teacher and can help you with these things is hopefully going to be useful to us as we try to practice the Dharma. Let's see, "Would I do this at the beginning of my nundro practice?" Yes, you could. You definitely could do that. You definitely could do that. "Can this be integrated into a session of practice, or would we do this after a session?" You know, I do it at the beginning, because it's just five minutes. It's just five minutes. So I would do it at the beginning. The person is asking, "Which guru should I use?" Well, you know, it depends. Some people actually have teachers that they learn the Dharma from. And if you have a teacher you learned the Dharma from, you could imagine that person. But they have to be made of light because you couldn't really put a flesh and blood person on top of your head and then imagine that they descend into your heart. So I encourage people to use an image of the Buddha Shakyamuni, the historical Buddha, because that's kind of easy to think about a Buddha image and to know that that image of the Buddha above your head is the embodiment of all of your teachers. That way, you don't have to leave a single one out. It could be the Dalai Lama, it could be Karmapa, it could be Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche, it could be your teacher, and so on. So that's... It says, okay, so then the person says, "So, once you dissolve the guru into yourself, and now I have Shakyamuni Buddha sitting in my heart, may I then proceed to my other practices?" Yes, actually, what's very interesting about this is that you just bless yourself by having the Buddha descend into your heart. You don't have to think about the Buddha again. You've received a blessing. That's the function of this particular part of the practice. You've received the Buddha's blessing and now you can practice. Does that make sense? Did that help? Did that help with the question? Okay, the question is saying, "Okay, all right." Other things that people would like to ask about, is there anybody who's on audio who would like to ask a question? If so, I think you can unmute yourself in the upper corner. Let's see, do we have anybody?
I have a question, Lama Kathy.
Yes.
If we're already doing a type of guru yoga as part of our daily practice, would this be something separate then? Because it doesn't seem to finish in the same way.
That's right. It doesn't finish in the same way. And so, yeah, this is really funny. This is your bodhicita practice. So you're going to like have like, you're going to add a five-minute bodhicita practice to the other things you're doing.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot.
Yeah, so there's like a little bodhicita practice, a beginning, a middle, and an end. And the beginning is that guru yoga, and then the middle is either doing shamatha practice, if that's what you know, or if you know tonglen practice, you can learn that also. You can do that also. And then at the conclusion of your tonglen practice, then you would say the Seven Branch Prayer. And by saying the Seven Branch Prayer, that closes your little five-minute bodhicita practice. Beginning, middle, end. Got it?
Perfect. That makes total sense. Thank you.
Other questions that people might have? Yeah.
Lama Kathy?
Yeah.
When you've talked about wisdom a couple of times, are you using that as a cinnamon? Cinnamon.
That's my life.
Synonym for ultimate bodhicita?
Correct. That is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's, what I like to say is wisdom is ultimate bodhicita. There's two kinds of bodhicita, relative bodhicita and ultimate bodhicita. And relative bodhicita is called relative because it has to do with our relationships. And ultimate bodhicita is called ultimate because it has to do with the way things really, really are in this world, the truth of the nature of things. So one is the relative truth is the truth of how things appear. And the ultimate truth is the truth of how things really are. Yeah, so that...
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Other questions? Okay, okay, just had to check before...
Lama Kathy, I have a question.
Yeah.
I just, I want to get this straight because I'm trying a new practice here that it's not new. It seems to be reiterating several points we've always talked about. But I want to get the practice right. So I have the text. I think you sent that out in the Lojong practices. And then we go through bringing the Buddha into the heart. And then the Buddha is, you said, "We don't need to think about Buddha anymore. He's gone." So...
Yeah, well, actually, he's there.
I mean, he's there. Yeah.
He's there.
He's not gone anywhere.
Yeah.
But I guess, now can I then proceed to, because I have several other practices?
I see.
And which include taking refuge and doing bodhicita again.
Right. Yeah, I would do this, I would do this as a discreet practice. I actually would do it as a five-minute, a complete five-minute discreet practice, separate from everything else.
Okay, okay. So closing it out then would be repeating the Seven Branch Prayer and then going on to the other practices, correct?
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you. I was not closing this out in the right way.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, I got to tell you the absolute truth. For some reason, you know, Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche once said that our karma is coming to fruition every moment. And so what I got to say is I am probably not at my best tonight, and I have no idea why. But there you go. It's, I did my best. I wrote an outline and everything. But you know, sometimes it just, you know, it doesn't really come out as clearly as I would like for it to be. And I'm hoping that next time it will be a little bit, it'll hang together a little better.
I'm sure the fault was at my end. Thank you.
Don't worry, don't worry. Let's see, are there any other questions? Okay. Okay, okay, let's see. Let's see, okay. All right, well then, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take a moment to summarize what we talked about today. And to talk about, I think, a little bit about shamatha meditation. I'm going to make the assumption that I'm going to make the assumption that everyone has had some kind of quiet sitting meditation instruction. But I'm going to give you a brief one right now so that this will help you as you practice your homework over the next little while. And so if we are going to do a session of meditation, what you can do is you find just a few minutes in your day when you're not busy. And you take a little time, you find a seat and a place in your home that is relatively quiet. And in that, and then that time period that you say to yourself, "I'm going to spend the next few minutes doing practice of meditation for the benefit of myself and others." And then you can use the meditative posture. Now, some people, I had a person talk to me today who said, or yesterday, who said that the only way they can meditate is if they're lying flat on the floor because they have so many muscular-skeletal conditions that it's just so hard for them to sit. So lying down is perfectly fine. You have to recognize you might fall asleep, but that's okay. This does happen. Now, but so you can lie flat on the floor using the yoga pose called the corpse pose, where you're lying flat on your back on the floor with support under your neck and then also support under your knees. And but you could also sit in a chair. And if you're sitting in a chair, you can place your hands, palm downward on the tops of your legs. And if you are sitting in a cross-legged on your meditation seat on the floor, you can place your hands, palm downward on your legs. And you can cast your eyes downward slightly. Some people say that if they leave their eyes open, their mind is too busy. So if your mind is very busy when your eyes are open, it's okay to close your eyes, but you might fall asleep. You have to be ready for that. And that is, I guess, the simplest way to explain meditation posture. If you're sitting in a chair, feet flat on the floor, hands resting, palm downward on your legs. If you're sitting cross-legged on the floor, your hands are palm downward on your legs, and that kind of holds you up like a bit of a tripod. And if you can lift your breastbone, which brings your shoulders up without your shoulders being hunched, and that you can tuck your chin in slightly, and that straightens your neck vertebrae, you can cast your eyes downward a few feet ahead, and you're gazing, not looking. You're just allowing your gaze to be soft and diffuse. And you can begin the practice by taking one deep breath through the nostrils if possible, and through your mouth if you're congested, and then breathe out. And then allow the breath to come and go naturally, following the course of your breath with your attention, placing your attention on the breath as it goes out, and your attention on the breath as it comes. and your attention on the breath as it comes in. And, and what you'll get when you do this is you'll get a short period of attention to your breath. For some people, they'll feel the breath all the way in, they'll feel the breath all the way out. For other people, they'll just feel the sensation of the breath as it comes and goes at the nostrils. And what will happen when you do this is that you'll have a short period of attention on the breath and then your attention will wander a little. It might wander into the past, something you thought about yesterday or that happened yesterday, or it might wander into the future into something that's going to happen tomorrow. And the technique is to notice the wandering. You can even label, label it, thinking, you let go of the wandering and then you consciously return your attention to your breath and think of it as a fresh start. And then you observe your breath again, coming in and going out. Each time you notice your attention wandering, you can label it, thinking, and then return your attention to the breath for a fresh start. At the conclusion of the meditation, you make the aspiration that all of the goodness that you practiced in your meditation session is shared between you and all sentient beings. And that, that is a method for doing quiet sitting meditation. And does anybody have questions about sitting meditation? You can either write them in the chat or unmute your microphone and ask. Okay, well, then, that, I think that completes what we were talking about today. That gives you your five, little five-minute homework, practice of, of doing the guru yoga. And, and then after that, doing some shamatha practice. This is called shamatha, this breath awareness meditation is called shamatha or calm abiding, abiding calmly or abiding with attention. And being able to do this practice and then dedicate it with the seven branch prayer is going to be the, the homework for this week. Next week, we'll cover point two of the seven points of mind training. And we'll be covering pages 10 through 17. And if anybody has questions or difficulties, you can email me. If I do not write back within two days, please write me again. Because sometimes things fall to the bottom of my email pile and I lose track. And I don't want to do that with your letter, so if you could do that, that would be useful. And I, I want to give a little shout out here at the end to, to the, I see, I see we have a couple of people who are wearing our Bodhisattva t-shirts. I see Leona May in Hartford is wearing hers and Linda, thank you Linda, you're wearing yours. Yeah, you know, I'll tell you what, yes, you can, you can, and you can buy your t-shirt because I promised that I would raise a little money for the Columbus KTC. You probably know a little bit about our story. That we've been at the Dharma Center in Columbus, Ohio for 43 years. And in, in the January of 2016, an arson fire happened and our center burned down. And we have spent the last four years raising money. And we're like super close to having enough money to pay for our basic construction. And we're about, we're about $500,000 short. So if you know any people who have some money and want to get some good karma, they can, they can send it to us. But part of the reason that I'm doing this program this summer is that I'm doing it partially, actually all of the money from, that you, from these registrations that did not go to Eventbrite. They take a very small amount of money for administration, but their whole rest of it is going to go to Columbus KTC. And it's going to help them with this, with this rebuilding project. Yes, thank you for modeling the t-shirt, yay, Leona May. It is a, it is a handsome t-shirt. And it's, it says Bodhisattva in Training and all the little, all the little hands and, and so forth of the Bodhisattva in Training. Thank you for modeling that for us, Leona May. And she's also just, she's also just put up, you can order them. You can order these for $20 per shirt, which the, that goes, money goes directly to the rebuilding thing. So this is my commercial.
No, $20 of the cost goes to the shirt, the total, yeah, comes to about $40.
Okay, so yes, it's a designer tee and it's designed for you. So you can order them, oh, I love it, you can order them from Bodhi Tee. What a great name, okay. It's down in chat and I'll also send it to people in the email tomorrow when I send you the link to the, when I send you the link to the YouTube video. So guys, we got, we got through class one, thank you. I don't know, like I say, I'm kind of like, nah. You know, I really appreciate all of you being here and it just, it warms my heart to see this many people interested in practicing bodhicitta. So I just can't thank you enough for, it's just so nice to see you all. My gosh, I finally got a chance to page through and see everybody. Hi, okay, thanks for being here. And we're going to conclude this evening by dedicating the merit from our session today. And we dedicate the goodness of this session to all suffering beings and all beings, because there's so much suffering right now. Making the aspiration that all beings are free from suffering and come to Buddhahood. I'll recite the short prayer of dedication in English. Through this merit, may all achieve the omniscience of Buddhahood. May it defeat our common enemy, wrongdoing. From the stormy waves of birth, old age, sickness and death. From the ocean of samsara, may we free all beings, may we free all beings, may we free all beings. Okay, thank you. I will send you a message, all of you a message tomorrow regarding signing up for subsequent classes. I, the Eventbrite, the Eventbrite website kind of made me have individual tickets for each event. And so if, if you only, if you only intended to, to make a donation once, you can email me at the email that I am sending you right now. And I will manually enter your names on all of the rest of the five classes. Alternately, if you wish to donate five more dollars, you can put $1 each and sign up for each of the next five classes. But if, if that's not something, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that it was, that people were gonna like, that it was going to happen that way. I may never do it this way again, I may do it a completely different way next time. But if you have only signed up for tonight's class, I believe the Zoom credentials will still be good next week. But just in case Zoom makes me change them. If you do, if you did not sign up for the other five classes and you want me to sign you up for, you know, at no cost, email me and between me and another volunteer, we will type all of your stuff in and get you all signed up in case Zoom decides to change our credentials. Like I say, this was, this was not my idea. I didn't know that it was going to work like that. You know, whoops, sorry about that, I accidentally clicked on somebody's square, sorry about that. So, but I'm, so I am sorry that Eventbrite kind of got us all mixed up. But I'm kind of hoping that this is like the beginning of something great obstacle. The Tibetans often tell me this. When things kind of get rocky and they're kind of weird at the beginning of something, that's, we're, we're using up some bad karma and that hopefully the rest of it will go very well, so that's my hope. So we'll, you know, we'll be in touch with you tomorrow. And, and so thank you again. And take really good care of yourselves and we'll be seeing you next week, Wednesday night, same time, same station. Have a great day, have a great day tomorrow practicing. Yay, oh, I love it, thumbs up and waving, you guys are amazing, okay. So om mani padme hum. Take good care of yourselves, all right? Be safe out there.
Night, good night Lama Kathy.
Good night.
See you next week.
Yeah, see you next time, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks Lama Kathy.
Hey, thank you, it's great to see you. I've been following you on Facebook, it's fun, so thank you. Bye. Great, it's like, I haven't seen you guys in an age. You know, I can't, I can't wait for this crisis to pass, but it might be a while. So I'm happy we can see each other here. Okay, guys, take really good care.
You too, bye-bye.
Okay, bye-bye, guys, bye-bye.